And I started the recording. Welcome, everybody, to the village board meeting for August 13th, 2020. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment for all those that suffered through COVID in these recent months. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, we only have two members of the public. And everyone else are board members and consultants. Okay, wait, we actually, okay, so the first item of business will be to see Deputy Clerk McLennan's niece, correct? Everyone ooh and ah.
Love it. Little William Wayne.
Okay, moving on. All right, so first up this evening is a public hearing on introductory local law number six of 2020 entitled Term Limits for Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals Members. This will amend sections 57-2B and 310-49A of the Village Code to provide for uniform terms and term limits for the Village Planning Board and Village Zoning Board of Appeals. Public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on August 3rd, 2020. Kelly, is there anything you want to say now? Would you rather just answer questions if they come up?
Um, I do just want to mention the one issue, well, two things, actually. So you referred this to the planning board. You got their comments back. You referred it to the Orange County Planning Department. It came back as a local determination. There was a comment from this board and actually also the planning board about making a revision to the law to clarify its applicability to current members. So I think the board doesn't need at some point to discuss that, give me some direction, and I can make that change before your next meeting. But I wanted to bring that up now in case the public is still asking.
Okay, very good. And I'm just re-attempting streaming here. So in the meantime, are there any members of the public that would like to say something about this?
Actually, Tim, yes, Robin.
I was not moving on until you guys spoke because I knew that.
It's really not a big deal, just really to support the law going forward for the very reasons that you put it forward, actually. I think it's very important to have fresh eyes every so often. Never hurts, never hurts to have another approach.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Kraus, Mr. Kraus.
I don't have anything.
Okay, thanks, Neil. Mr. Zlada?
I'm good, Tim.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Gerber? Okay. Okay, thanks, Chris. Just for the record, Facebook is not allowing us to stream this evening. There must be either a bandwidth issue or problem on Facebook's side, so I apologize in advance for that. I will continue to try. It's still preparing. Excuse me. Okay, so with no further comments received, can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacque Mazza with the motion and trustee Burek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. All right, so now we'll move on to public comments on agenda items.
Nope, 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 nope.
No, we will not move on to couple of comments on the agenda.
You have to make a decision about the grandfathering issue that Kelly brought up. And then are you going to set up a written comment period?
Yes, we are going to set up a written comment period. And that will be until close of business on the 21st, correct us?
Um, well, I had the 28th because um, you were slotted to adopt the law on September 10th. But I believe you're going to get some direction from the attorney in your attorney-client session later about this issue?
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, Kelly, when I asked you before.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to.
We didn't want to go with that, but that's okay. Okay, so close of business on the 28th sounds good to me. So do we need a motion on that one?
Yes.
So then I'll need a motion in a second to accept written comments after this close of the public hearing until close of business on August 28th.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion, trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And, yeah, go ahead.
The grandfather issue, did you want to talk about that now or talk about it in attorney-client?
Uh, I think we'll talk about it in attorney-client along with everything else that we have to discuss this evening.
I will so advise. I did, I did have some direction from your prior discussions. I just want to confirm it before I make the changes, so that's fine.
Very good. Okay, terrific. Now, can I move on, Desiree? Just ask mom, okay.
Yes, Mayor, you can move on.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to public comment on agenda items. So like before, we'll go in order, either Mr. or Mrs. Kraus, anything on the agenda?
No, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Rob.
I do.
Oops, sorry.
All right, it's on the, I think there's going to be discussion on a moratorium. And I believe that's a good idea.
Okay.
I, I would hope that if it is, you approve a moratorium, you do allow the two recently appointed committees to complete their work, particularly the Comprehensive Planning Committee, to complete their work either within the six months that you might initially approve, or if you have an extension. So you'd have the input from those two committees to, before you lift the moratorium.
Well, we'll talk more about the purpose of the proposed moratorium a little later, and there will, of course, be a public comment on that at some point as well.
Right, and I, and I had three, Kelly? I had, I had three, like typos.
In the term limits?
No, no, in, in, for the, what was written in for the moratorium, the possible moratorium.
Okay, what are those?
They were, one was under legislative binding, the second line, it reads, uh.
To be experienced.
Experienced significant, maybe experienced is not a word that should be there.
I, I think it's supposed to be past tense. That's here by font that you, that you have experienced.
Experienced, okay.
Yeah.
And down at the same section, down near the bottom, it says, uh, the second line, this has been occurred, the, the sentence is the second to the last one in that section, it says, it says, "The Comprehensive Plan in Zoning Court Has Been Occurred."
Ben should be removed.
I mean, that's what I'm suggesting. And then on the second page, down under, it's just above the section four, the line, it would be the last line of the section, the moratorium imposed applicability. But it's the last line of that, it's just above section four. I'm wondering if there should be Village of Woodberries with an apostrophe S for possessive.
I don't, I don't think that's the name of the document.
Well, anyway, that, that line says, "Review of the Village of Woodbury Comprehensive Plan," I'm wondering if that should be Village of Woodberries Comprehensive Plan.
I think that one's okay as is.
Okay, that's fine.
Did you have any others?
No, that was it.
Yeah. Just making sure you're checking it out, Neil.
Well, I tell you, I have to show you the least I read it, so I went through it.
You know, I purposely put a couple in each one just to make sure.
I think someone misses being on the village board. And he was never an English teacher, by the way.
Okay, anything else, Krauses?
No.
Okay, Mr. Zlada?
Yes, and just one quick question.
Yep.
Item B on the new business, the authorization of RFK for the remodeling in the building department offices. Is this, in addition to the work that was being done to expand the firehouse for village offices?
No, 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 this is about Adam Street, down, down off of Hunter.
Okay.
The old Osweiler Building.
Okay.
This, this is about getting architectural drawings and starting that process so that we can be prepared when we want to move forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Mr. Gerber, anything?
Happy to be here. No, no, no call.
Happy to have you. Okay, moving on into administrative business. I need a motion in a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 3rd, 2020, excuse me, July 23rd, 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacque Mazza. And trustee Burek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Andrew?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion in a second to approve abstract number five containing vouchers 200312 through 200409 totaling $270,975.04. I think it was trustee Gomez first, and then trustee Burek will take with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
My vote aye. Thank you. Next up, Fire Department equipment requests. Need a motion in a second to approve Fire Department equipment request 2020-16 totaling approximately $1,375.50 for the purchase of hoses and plugs, and 2020-17 totaling approximately $170 to replace damaged lettering on car three and to replace old license plates for the three chiefs vehicles.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacque Mazza had his hand up, and then trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. I need a motion in a second to close escrow accounts for Highland Mills Center Group as requested by the building department.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion. Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
How about I? Old business. There's been no written comments received with regard to introductory local law number eight of 2020 entitled Wireless Telecommunications. So I'm going to ask for a motion in a second to adopt local law number eight of 2020 entitled Wireless Telecommunications Society.
After you approved the negative declaration that I sent?
Yes, my apologies.
Sorry. I, I had sent it like pre the last meeting, and I think.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me. Deal with this one second.
So they're making a motion to approve the negative declaration?
Oh, to declare a negative declaration.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm clarifying.
They can adopt the negative declaration.
To adopt the negative.
As drafted, something like that.
Kelly, you sent me way too many emails.
It was, I think it was at, for the, at the last meeting, you guys had it. If I remember correctly.
You know what, I'm going to stop looking for it. I'm just going to say that, need a motion in a second to, to declare a negative declaration with regard to SEACRA for this new local law. Is that good, Kelly? That work? Okay, thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Trustee Graziano with the motion. I think trustee Burek had her hand up. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
What I, anything else before we can move on? Okay, thanks, Kelly.
Adopt.
Yep, that's what I was just looking at. I need a motion in a second to adopt local law number eight of 2020 entitled Wireless Telecommunications Society. Trustee, the motion, trustee, Jesus had his hand up first, trustee Jacque Mazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, what I, Des, can you call the roll, please?
I certainly can. Mayor Egan?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Jacque Mazza?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
Trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we need to approve a form to use for entity disclosures. So I need a motion in a second to approve the form of the entity disclosure form as it relates to local law number seven that we already passed of 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacque Mazza, trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
My vote aye. Okay. All right, new business. We're going to look to pass a resolution to support Assembly Bill A 7699B and Senate Bill S 6224B entitled Community Preservation Funds. Des, you want to read the resolution or the pertinent areas of the resolution, and I'll call, I'll call the vote?
Certainly. Resolved that the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees urges the New York State Assembly and the New York State Senate to seriously consider the legislation for adoption and be it further resolved that the Village Clerk is hereby directed to send certified copies of this resolution to the Governor, Andrew Cuomo, Assemblyman Colin Schmidt, Senator James Scoofus, and County Executive Stephen Newhouse.
Terrific. My understanding is this passed in the Assembly last year and not the Senate, if I'm not mistaken. Anyway, so can I have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution that Desiree just read urging the support of those Assembly and Senate bills?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Burek with the motion.
A second.
Trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, what I, somebody was vibrating there. So next up is to authorize the request for proposals for remodeling of building department offices. I'm going to ask for a motion in a second to authorize the village clerk to advertise for proposals for consultant services related to the remodeling of building department offices located on Adam Street. Trustee Jacque Mazza with the motion. Trustee Burek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, now we need a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the 2020-2021 dental insurance policy renewal. It should be noted that monthly rates have not changed from the previous year.
I'll make that.
Trustee Gomez with the motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Burek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about I? Okay. We have another introductory local law to introduce. I need a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law number nine of 2020, which would amend Chapter 227 of the Village Code entitled Parking Prohibited: Setting Parking Restrictions for a Portion of Valley Avenue. This local law was requested by the Village Street Superintendent at the behest of the businesses located in the area.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacque Mazza with the motion, trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I need a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing on introductory local law number nine of 2020 to be held at 7:30 PM on August 27th at our next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Burek with the motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Jacque Mazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, we have another introductory local law. Need a motion in a second to introduce introductory local law number 10 of 2020, which would institute a moratorium on certain permits, certificates of occupancy, and approvals for a period of six months. This moratorium will allow the village board of trustees a reasonable opportunity to complete its review of the current comprehensive plan and any amendments deemed necessary to that comprehensive plan.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion. Trustee Burek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about I? So now we need to decide on the date for the public hearing. Now, we just scheduled the public hearing for our next meeting for the previous introductory local law. I'm suggesting that we do that at the following meeting on September 10th, but this is open for discussion. When would you guys like to do this public hearing?
Can you double them up or no?
We can. There's no law against it.
You can. I just want to note that I'm not going to be at the next meeting, not that that matters, because Jessica is fully capable of doing minutes, but I wanted to make you guys aware of that.
It's up to the rest of that. I just, I just asked the question so we had the information. I'm, I'm okay doubling it up if, if the rest of the board is okay doubling it up for that meeting.
Um, I do just want to note that it is a type-two action under SEACRA, but it does require GML referral, so I'll send it out tomorrow. But if you, you know, hold the public hearing, you're not going to have the county's comments back. It doesn't need to go to the planning board for referral, just the planning department for the county.
Well, to close the public hearing, unless anyone objects, we'd also take written comment, which would also buy us a little time to get the GML review back from the county.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, it sounds like you folks want to do it on the next meeting on the 27th after the other public hearing. That's what I'm hearing, right? So then I need a motion in a second to schedule the public hearing on introductory local law number 10 of 2020 to be held at 7:30 PM immediately following the previous public hearing on August 27th.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion, trustee Jacque Mazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about I?
Kelly, can you get me that notice first thing in the morning so I can get it to the paper?
Yeah.
Thank you.
For a second, I heard first thing in the morning, and in my head, that registered as like 5:00 AM. I mean, I'm too early, but not at 5:00.
No, I'm leaving at noon, and then I'll be out of town for the next two weeks, so I got to get it to the paper tomorrow before I leave.
Got it.
Yeah, to me, first thing in the morning is before my feet hit the floor.
Yeah.
That's why I was like, uh, really?
No, just for enough time for me to get it to where it's got to go.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to do another resolution on retention and disposition schedule for New York local government records. Desiree, would you like to read something for that?
I, I can. I can give you a little background if you still want.
Please, just give us some background. This is your thing, so.
Okay. So as you may or may not know, records of a government has to follow a retention schedule that's dictated by the State Board of Regents through the New York State Archives. And there were currently five different schedules that were separated by municipalities, counties, schools, and then miscellaneous type things. And the state archives for the past year and a half have been working to combine them all into one 441-page schedule now called the LGS1. And because it's a brand-new schedule, which has changed a lot of my coding, as well as our links of retention for some documents, we have to, by law, adopt this schedule, which will go into effect or had actually gone into effect August 1st, but I can't follow it till you actually adopt it. So they have prepared a resolution for you to adopt, which I will read if the mayor wants me to.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So you need a motion in a second that the retention and disposition schedule for New York State Local Governments, LGS1, issued pursuant to Article 57-A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law, and containing legal minimum retention periods for local government records is hereby adopted for use by all officers in legally disposing of valueless records listed therein. In accordance with Article 57-A, A, only those records will be disposed of that, that are described in the retention and disposition schedule for New York State Local Government Records, LGS1, after they have met the minimum retention periods described therein. And B, only those records will be disposed of that do not have sufficient administrative, fiscal, legal, or historical value to merit retention beyond established legal minimum periods.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we now need a motion in a second to adopt the resolution read by the village clerk.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Graziano with the motion, trustee Jacque Mazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Now, what I, we don't need a roll call for that, Henry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so another resolution, one more. This is to levy previously exempted properties. So I need a motion in a second. Actually, let's have Desiree read the resolution first, and then we'll get the motion in a second.
Well, there's about 10 or 9 properties listed, but basically I can just explain it, what it is.
Yes.
Houses that had previously exemptions, whether it be an age exemption or veteran exemption or whatnot, that have sold, and the new property owner does not have, is not allowed to take advantage of that exemption from the period of when they bought it to now. So these are houses that the assessor office informed me once the deeds have been filed that we have to levy the appropriate tax onto their property at our next tax, tax bills, which will be June of 2021. You get these periodically throughout the year. She usually sends them to me in batches. This particular batch has several. You'll see the prices are kind of low because it's, some of it, people only just bought it. Some people bought it a couple of months ago.
Yeah, and there are 10 properties, just to add. All right, so we need a motion in a second to adopt this resolution to re-levy the appropriated tax amount due on these properties that were, as Desiree explained, previously eligible for an exemption.
Make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Jacque Mazza with the second. Any discussion?
What's the trustee?
What's that?
What's Tara?
Where'd Tara go?
Tara's internet went down, so she inboxed me, so she's working on it right now.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye.
All right, so I just have to make a note that she's not here, and I have to just make a note in the minutes that she left the meeting, and then if she comes back in, could you let me know, because I can't see everybody at once. I don't know who's leaving and who comes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay. So that concludes regular business. Excuse me, we'll now go out to public comment. I will just, okay, the Krauses already unmuted themselves, so.
I did, just a quick question, Tim. Um, is the town-village lawsuit court proceeding still happening in September? Is it still on the docket?
It was October, wasn't it, Kelly? Was it, or is it in September?
Um, it got rescheduled to October.
Yeah, I thought so. To answer your question, yeah, it changed with the scheduled court appearance.
All right.
One of the things we're going to be speaking about in attorney-client this evening.
Okay.
Whereas to the status of that potential settlement.
Okay, do you have a date on, in October or not quite yet?
I'm just looking, October 1st.
Oh, okay. Um, since you're going to be discussing it later, I would just urge the board to stand firm with the original conditions set forth on April 22nd. But obviously counsel will advise you, possibly otherwise.
Desiree, Tara's back.
I'm sorry, later, Nick.
Thank you, Robin. Was there anything else that either you or Neil had?
Not myself, but.
Yes, I just wanted to, during this, during the recent storm and the damage, we, we were away. We were up on the St. Lawrence for a week's vacation, so we missed it. We did, we did follow it through the different, I guess, Facebook pages and stuff like that. I want to thank the village departments for the work. I guess they, they all did, the fire, fire department, the, the highway and everybody. And I really, I want to thank you, Tim, for keeping people advised, and also the trustees, particularly, I think Andrew. And I appreciate it, even though we were several hundred miles away, we were able to track things that were happening, and it was just the good work of the various village departments and the village officials in keeping everyone informed on what was going on. And we got home and we didn't, we kept looking for all the damage and stuff. We fortunately didn't have that much. So I just want, I just want to thank everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a huge team effort. A lot of people involved in that. Um, Mr. Zlada?
That's him. This may come under the heading of maybe nitpicking, but a suggestion, the documents pages with village board meetings is getting kind of messy. There seems to be no consistency in the file names being used and posting minutes. If I could, maybe a easy suggestion that would make that page a lot easier to use is very simply, if it's a village board meeting, minutes VB, year-year, year-year, hyphen, month-month, hyphen, day-day. If you follow that convention across the board, all of the minutes will be in chronological order.
Yeah.
Right now, they're sorted alphabetically by month, so April and August come up first. You have to hunt.
Tell you what, I'll take a look at that, and I'll work with Jessica to try and clean that up.
Well, also, I do know, you know, with the pandemic, we've been short-staffed, and people are just getting back to their normal schedules. But it does appear that there are some meeting minutes missing from the page. And again, you know, I'm not certain what meetings were canceled and what meetings went forward, but I do recall that there was a planning. I do recall that there was a planning board meeting on March 4th. I don't see those meeting minutes out there. And it looks like Village Board meeting minutes from July 9th are not out there. So maybe if somebody could just look at that.
Will do. Thank you. Anything else, Joe?
That's it.
Okay, so somebody named Craig just joined the meeting.
Craig Brady. Craig Brady.
Oh, Craig Brady, Mr. Brady. Of course, I should have guessed. We're into public comment, Craig. We've already gone through the agenda. Did you have anything that you wanted to say?
Just listening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, there's nobody else from the public on the meeting, so we'll move right into board member comment. So I just wanted to add to what Neil was talking about. I just wanted to take the time to thank quite a few people in their efforts related to the tropical storm we had last week. As was widely reported, the damage this storm created was only exceeded by Superstorm Sandy in 2012. I want to first thank the Water and Sewer Department led by Nikki Phillips. We sometimes take it for granted that we're going to get water when we turn on the faucet, and that we're going to have a well-functioning sewer system. But that wouldn't happen without the hard work of a dozen people working in our Water and Sewer Department. At one point during this storm, and in the days following, we had 11 generators running to make sure that all corners of the village had continuing service. And we were stretched very, very thin, but these guys worked very long hours to make sure that we had continued service throughout the village. This group of guys does excellent work day in and day out, and truly should be appreciated. Our Highway Department's no exception. Rob Wyant and his crews were proactive in preparing for the storm, and were out there during and immediately after, working closely with Orange and Rockland to clear roads and trees to make way for utility repairs. Both departments work hardest during days and weeks like this, and we simply could not live in our community without them on the job. Our Fire Department went out on over a dozen calls that day. I think the total was 14 during the storm last Tuesday. And our dedicated volunteers are at their best during times of stress. We should all be grateful for their commitment to our community. Our volunteer ambulance corps, as well as our Police Department, were extremely active last week. Overall, these groups of people all work together as a team and make sure that we're safe, and I just want to, again, thank them all. And I want to thank Andrew for taking the lead on the contact with Orange and Rockland. Andrew was on the phone day and night despite the fact that he didn't have power at his own house. I think he actually camped out here at Village Hall for much of last week in an attempt to maintain communication with Orange and Rockland and get us the information we need so that we'd know when we were going to get power back for those that were out without power. So, Trustee Jacque Mazza, thank you for your efforts there in particular.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I had. We'll move on to Trustee Graziano.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, everybody who attended tonight, and those who are going to watch on the tape. You know, this year's been a little hectic, to say the least. And something I've noticed is a trend, and I think we all kind of are getting frustrated between the storms, between being cooped up with the pandemic, between being, you know, worried about what's going to happen with school buildings and everything else. I think everybody's got to take a step back and take a breath and realize that sometimes in the worst of times, brings out the worst of people, and we got to kind of take a little bit of a break with, and take a step back and be, kind of remember to count our blessings and feel lucky for what we do have, and not kind of, you know, get aggravated what we don't have. And, you know, one of those things that I've been seeing is a lot of people insulting or really running to social media and throwing comments out there before researching things, and we got, we got to really stop doing that, and we got to kind of really take a breath. Like I said, take a breath. And, and, you know, calm down a little bit, and then look at what's going on. This was a storm. Yes, it was a bad storm. I think it was a combination. You know, I had an email from one of our citizens, and I kind of explained this to him. You know, this was a storm. If you remember Sandy, Sandy's forecast was like the end of days. Everybody run, hide, shelter. We're all going to die. That was, the forecast for a week was brutal. This forecast came in that, you know, we're going to get some wind, a little bit of rain, and it's going to bowl through really fast. It was kind of like a really low-key forecast. So it kind of hit people a little bit, I think, more by surprise than Sandy. But again, I realized that, you know, people being out of power that long also was, you know, very hardship, especially in the summer months. So again, I'd also like to, you know, recognize the village departments, you know, especially the Water Department. Working in the water industry, I know how hard it is to keep things going when there is no power. The, the worst thing you could possibly do for your citizens is they're already working without power in the heat of the summer, and then they lose another utility such as water. That would be a double whammy that would really make, get everybody really aggravated. So I like to thank them for all the work they did and put in, and all the generous they had to run and keep running to make sure we didn't lose anybody as far as water goes. I also like to thank the Highway Guys for clearing the streets and helping move trees. You know, the Clerk's Office and Desiree and your team for taking all the phone calls and making sure when people want to contact us, they got to hold us. And, you know, Andrew and Tim, you guys were out there communicating. And there's another thing I said to that somebody, you know, I responded to this person was, it's not always the most important to be first with the information. You want to get it out there in a timely manner, but you want it to be correct, and you want it to be right. So being first is not the most important thing, but having the right information and having that timely is important, and you guys did that very well. And you got the correct information out to people where I saw a lot of wrong information out there. So I really appreciate the job you guys did with that as well. So again, everybody, it's 2020's been one hell of a year. There's a lot going on, and now we're going to be moving into the next phase of this, which is already starting, is going to be the presidential election. So again, I'm going to ask everybody just to kind of look inside themselves and find the kinder person inside themselves and not get caught up in the hype. Other than that, thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you, Chris. Well said. Um, trustee Gomez, right? I'm trying to think of the day as it's been so long.
That's fine. All right. Let me start by thanking our village department heads and all our personnel. They did a wonderful job preparing for the storm, getting Woodbury back on track at the damage left behind. Thank you all for your hard work and dedication to our community. Last Friday, Andrew and I attended the meeting, the first meeting, to begin a local version of STOP, or STOP trafficking, trafficking of minors and pedophilia. STOP is a grassroots effort aiming to end trafficking and pedophilia pedophilia of children, sorry. Like many, I was shocked to see Annie begin this post, the Families of Woodbury listing two children of our area on the Missing and Exploited Children website. There are 13 children in the Hudson Valley total. That is 13 children, too many, in my opinion. All was with the creation of the Hudson Valley STOP is to bring awareness of an ongoing problem involving children in our community and neighboring communities. Currently, visiting members like Annie and Kristen are working on a potential rally with guest speakers to include elected officials and victims of abuse. Right now, we are in the infancy stage of this new group. We will continue to keep you updated on our progress and how you can play a small role in helping to end the exploitation of our children. We believe in the motto, "We can achieve more together than we do alone." Once again, thanks, thanks once again for viewing and taking part in our meetings. We look forward to supporting you and supporting your Woodbury community. Have a great night.
Thanks, Jesus. Trustee Bjork?
Believe it or not, this used to be one of my favorite times of year. Back-to-school shopping and preparing for the upcoming school year have always been something I looked forward to even as a kid. And yes, I got made fun of for it for years, and still today. That's okay. This year, however, we're preparing for a school year where the day-to-day is so unfamiliar and so scary for our children. While our kids are longing for the normalcy they had just a few short months ago, and today, so much has changed, possibly forever, we must look for the constants to remain, to reinforce the comfort and safety our children have come, have become accustomed to when attending school, but they're returning in person in September. I, for one, am grateful to live in a supportive school district with nurturing personnel who will no doubt go above and beyond to make sure our children have as much normal in their day, in their day as humanly possible. I know that our children's safety and well-being, both physical and emotional, are of utmost importance to every single person in our schools. From the greeters who welcome our children to school on the days they will attend, to the school resource officers who will ensure our children's physical safety, to the teachers who will be setting the tone for our children on a daily basis and will be as warm and comforting as they can be, and to the administrators who have worked and are still working tirelessly all summer to develop a return-to-school plan that meets the needs of our community as best as they can. As a parent of two little girls who will attend these schools for many years to come, I cannot thank you all enough. I believe the phrase, "We are all in this together," rings true now more than ever. I have been trying, hopelessly trying, to prepare my kids for what's to come as best as I can based on the information available. And while these circumstances are in no way ideal, I believe we have to focus on the positives this year will bring. Whether our children will be learning remotely or adopting to a hybrid model, I truly believe that their resilience will prevail and that they will be stronger for this experience as will be. So thank you again to everyone that's working, whether it's in front of the camera, behind the scenes, with the schools. I know this is a very trying time for everyone. Both anxiety levels are heightened, you know, from the teaching perspective and from the parents' perspective. But we thank you so much for everything that you're doing, and we look forward to the school year starting in a few weeks. Again, thank you, everyone who is watching. Be well and stay safe.
Thank you, Tara. And trustee Jacque Mazza.
Kara, there's something smoking behind you. Is it supposed to be doing that?
Yeah, it's my diffuser.
Okay, just wanted to let, you know, see something, say something, so.
Thank you. I was wondering how long it was going to take somebody to say something.
I was like, there's a light there. I hope that thing's burning. Okay.
My halo.
Ready for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, on this edition of Random Thoughts with Andrew Jacque Mazza. I will not speak in the third party after this, though. Let me start by commending all the department heads for the job done during this storm. I personally witnessed our volunteers from the Fire Department checking on bridges and water flow of Woodbury Creek and Park Avenue. The various calls they handled that day, the alarms seemed to be going off nonstop. Our Highway Department for assisting O and R contractors in tree removal to help expedite the return of power to our residents. Our Water and Sewer Department checking and rechecking various pump stations to make sure everything was flowing. I believe we had 14 generators operating for several days at various pump stations. Woodbury was in need, and the Village of Woodbury responded. As much as, as my fellow trustees and I would like to take credit for the staffing of these departments, that all goes to former board members, Mayor Mike Queenen, Tim Egan, Buddy McElogic, Neil Kraus, and Tom Flood, who built a solid foundation of infrastructure for us as new board members to work with. So I thank, I thank all our department heads. Speaking of former board members, I would like to say thank you to the man I replaced not once, but twice in the Village of Woodbury. Last week saw the departure of former zoning board chairman and former village trustee, Buddy McElogic and his wife Evette, from all the love of Woodbury. Buddy had a lifetime of service to our community. As mentioned, he served 10 years on our zoning board. He was president of the Woodbury Community Association, as well as being their scholarship chairman for many years. And he served on the parish council over at St. Patrick's. As well, he served three years as a village trustee. For a community desperately looking for volunteers and people to step up, the loss of Buddy and his wife Evette is a blow to Woodbury. So on behalf of the board, I would like to say, Buddy and Evette, enjoy your retirement. Speaking of losses, we recently saw the departure of Ben and Pat Cox. Ben and Pat have been a heart and soul of the Woodbury Community Ambulance for countless years. Their departure only illustrates how far we need to come in rebuilding our core of volunteers at the ambulance corps and even at the Fire Department. I wish Ben and Pat, who will still be returning every Monday to answer calls, I wish them all the best in their retirement. Continuing with the connection theme, Pat Cox's departure not only creates an opening in the Woodbury community's ambulance, but also in our Woodbury library. A notice seeking applicant should be in one of our local papers shortly. I implore our community to get involved with our library. Our current library board consists of a great group of women led by the wonderful Dorothy Morris that can use an assortment of people to fill roles. People who better reflect the changing demographic of Woodbury. Young moms, young dads. More importantly, and closer to my heart, is somebody who has a child with special needs or on the autism spectrum. They will bring a wealth of knowledge and experience to the table for the library board. And we're making a big push publicly to fill this opening with somebody that fits the aforementioned criteria. Finally, the Village of Woodbury will play in host to the Woodbury Community Ambulance's annual blood drive on September 26th. I am meeting with Debbie on Monday at 10:00 AM. We'll be coordinating efforts with the New York Blood Center, and more details will follow. That's it. Be well and be safe.
Thanks, Andrew. Okay, so let's move on to Desiree. Anything? Jessica? Uh, where's Kelly? Kelly moved. Kelly. Nothing else. Okay. So that concludes department heads, regular board members. Okay, so that concludes our business. So I'll now look for a motion and a second to adjourn. Trustee Gomez with the motion. Trustee Jacque Mazza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor? So we do have the separate meeting ID for the attorney-client session, so we'll end this meeting, and then we'll all jump into that one. Okay? All right, good night, everybody. Thank you.